Out of Italy and had not too long ago opened up operations in the United States. They manufacture in Italy machines that produce optic lenses and they sell those machines to various companies. It's a big operation, one that I'm sure, you know, the city, a type of business that the city would like to have in Wooddale. And what happens now is as they're trying to expand and better their business operations by submitting a permit for some modular walls, the same permit that was actually accepted and passed three years ago, despite the fact that these violations, alleged violations, I don't know too much about them, were in existence, despite that fact, the same type of permit was passed three years ago. The permit and the work that's being requested has absolutely nothing to do with the violations. I understand that these alleged violations have to do with the exterior, driving, parking lot, roadways of the property, and this is an entirely interior renovation. And it's nonsensical to hold this against the tenant and really as who I believe the position is clerk, not Ms. Seibert, but another woman that runs the day-to-day operations here, has said is to use the tenant as a bargaining chip in order to get these zoning violations in compliance. That's not the right attitude for this. Okay? No harm is going to be done to the city by granting these permits. The permit application, in fact, was all of a sudden stopped even though there was no deficiency in the permit as a result of the fact that there is these alleged outstanding violations that are entirely unrelated. That's my common sense approach to the situation. The legal approach to the situation is such that I had requested last week after hearing that the law, the ordinance states that no permits can be issued when there are outstanding violations for someone to simply steer me in that direction. I was referenced, it's chapter 12, article 1, section 12.12E of the building code, which states, "The imposition of the penalties herein prescribed shall not preclude the building official from instituting appropriate action to prevent unlawful construction or to restrain, correct, or abate a violation, or to prevent illegal occupancy of a building structure or premises, or to stop an illegal act, conduct, business, or use of a building or structure in or about any premises." Now, my argument to that is this has nothing to do with what the city is trying to accomplish by stopping this permit in its tracks. Nowhere in that language does it say, "We're not allowed as a city to issue permits when there is an existing code violation." Prior just minutes to walking in here, I was informed that there may be an ordinance to that effect that had been presented or raised to the council. I don't know what the status of that is. Marshalajist mentioned it also. I agree with him 100% that the types of situations that the city will find itself in are therefore going to be very distressing to business owners when they're caught in these situations. When you have a situation where a tenant who is unrelated at the time to in any way with the landlord when the violations occurred is now suffering as a result of the landlord's previous code violation, which then pins the two parties against each other and of course pins the parties against the city. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's a common sense approach. I don't think anything is going to be accomplished that way. And it's very simple and at least it should be limited in situations where the actual violation is related to the work that is being sought to be permitted. Here, the alleged violations again and the work being sought to be permitted couldn't be more distant from each other. So for those reasons, I would ask that the building department continue to review the permit. If there's any deficiencies in the permit, we will address those. However, notwithstanding any deficiencies, we would ask it be completed and reviewed as quickly as possible. Do want to mention, you know, I had reached out last Thursday. I had not heard back other than the fact that someone would be in contact with me about it. In the meantime, my client is now waiting, the contractors are waiting to start next week. He also has his other employees from Italy that are waiting to fly in in order to help with construction work. So, and I know that he knows, he's aware that if the work doesn't get done quickly, that that opportunity will be lost because these contractors will not be available. So I not only asked for that request to be granted, but I would ask for a expedited review of the permit and it may be the case that it's been actually completely reviewed and it just needs to be not withheld. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, as council knows, I think Mr. Subak indicated that chapter 12, there was an amendment to chapter 12. The practice of the city under the previous code provision was that if there is a code violation on the property, that the city would not issue permits relative thereto. There was a, a lot of clarification in the code was presented to you and it was approved, I believe, two weeks ago at the last city council meeting. That was one of them that provided for basically a specific clarification of the code language that was consistent with the staff application and interpretation of the code. The reason for it is quite frankly, and it's up to, it's a council, you know, if you as a council believe that you want to change the philosophy, but the rationale behind that change was that this is when you get the property owner to comply. And I agree with council, while the two, the permit for the interior remodel is not directly related to the issues, the outstanding code issues that exist on that property, this, the purpose of that and the reason the staff has interpreted that way is to bring the matter to resolution, the underlying code violation. We've got both council for the developer, or for the tenant as well as council for the property owner here, and the hope is that that could get worked out and the submissions have been made. I understand from speaking to Mr. Subak that they have submitted, made submissions just recently. So those submissions will be reviewed in a timely fashion. Hopefully will resolve the outstanding code issue on the property with the property owner. That will then open the, you know, open the way for the tenant to be able to receive the permit upon review of the permit requirements.
No questions. It's not a debate. It's not on the agenda. All right. Does anybody else want to address the council this evening? All right, next, written communiques. I have one letter. It's that time again for the Knights of Columbus Financial Drive to support its programs for children with special needs. It's a popularly known as the Tootsie Roll Drive in which we solicit contributions and distribute Tootsie Rolls in the process. The drive this year is to be held Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, September 21st, 22nd, and 23rd for which permission is being requested of you as in the past nights would be stationed intersections and commercial establishments in Wooddale. And should we require any other information? Gary Effort. These care written communiques. Under mayor's report, thank you to all the volunteers, public works, police, staff for successful Prairie Fest event. Mr. Murmas.
Mayor, sir.
You kind of stole my thunder, but I also wanted to add that thanks for the residents coming out. It's not a, it's not a successful event without the residents. I would note that we did have a record-setting attendance on Thursday night for the resident appreciation night as far as the food being eaten that night. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda. If no objections, entertain a motion.
I make the motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, entertain a motion to approve the item on the agenda and ordinance amending chapter 15, article 8, sections 15.806(c) and d of the city code to prevent improper traffic cut through on private property. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Mike. Roll call, please.
All right, question.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Time out. If you had a question, we need to remove it from consent agenda.
Sorry. Go ahead.
We ready?
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
He's not here.
Alderman Messina?
Abstained.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes. Alderman Woods planning in zoning.
I have two reports, mayor.
Go ahead.
One, a resolution adopting the city of Wooddale's comprehensive plan. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Second. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
No.
And that passes.
My next report is a resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into a professional service agreement with the rental, retail rental, Retail Coach LLC for the creation of a comprehensive retail recruitment and development plan. That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? Alderman Messina?
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
I thought you disappeared. So in just kind of reading through this, I just wanted to confirm some of what I read because I wasn't at the last meeting, but as far as deliverables, if I understood correctly, it's bimonthly, contract is 12 months, four months of that is research. We have three locations, I think, identified. My question is, they talked about different phases that they report on. Will our contract include all of those, I think, seven phases or only parts of that?
Ms. Christie, go ahead.
The entire scope of the, excuse me, all of the phases that are listed are covered within the 12-month time period. There are 20 development sites that are part of this 12-month...
But I thought I read there was three focus area, like Georgetown Square, Irving Park. Are those just three separate areas and then those can be narrowed down to 20 individual parcels or sites?
Ms. Christie.
So those areas were identified by the Retail Coach. They did a preliminary sort of scout of the community and they identified that those might be kind of the target areas that we would be interested in, but certainly any 20 sites would be up for evaluation as part of the scope of services.
Follow.
Thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you're next.
And this resolution, it doesn't say how much this is going to be?
Forty-five.
Art, you made the motion. You want to...
I think it's forty-five.
Forty-five.
Pretty sure it's forty-five thousand.
Let's get the exact number.
It's forty-five.
Kelly knows.
I'm referring.
Go ahead, Ms. Christie, go ahead. Give us the exact number, please.
It is forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
For one year, two years?
Hold on, one second. Ms. Christie, go ahead.
It's forty-five thousand for a one-year contract.
Even, right?
Correct.
Can I add something there?
Hold on. Alderman Wesley's next.
That's it.
Go ahead. Oh, that's it? So we need an amendment to the motion to reflect the Alderman Woods.
We don't necessarily need the amendment. We found the information, but we can make one.
Well...
If that's what we want.
Not to exceed amount.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Well, we're doing final approval here, aren't we?
Yeah.
So it should be a dollar amount in there, right, Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Barnes?
The typical, it references in the, there's an attachment to that that includes the dollar amount, but to make it clear for transparency's sake, if the motioner and the seconder agree, then just include the not to exceed amount of forty-five.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'll add that to the motion, not to exceed forty-five thousand.
I would agree.
Okay. Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Can I just get a clarification? If we decide to continue in years two and three, which are optional, that is thirty thousand, right?
Ms. Christie?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Any other questions? No more. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Nope.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Sorrentino?
No report this evening, mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Sizmarzki?
Mayor, it's five. First, I have a northwest and northeast corner of Irving Park and Wooddale road reconstruction or construction of a motion.
Second. Randy. Any questions on this? Mr. Murmas, go ahead.
It's on page 57 in your packet. It lays out the staff and city attorney recommendation and liquidated damages and the contract extension that's requested by Copenhagen for the clock tower project. It's a four-grid layout.
Alderman Eugene Wesley, go ahead.
So my question, the, it's counting, this project's also counting the other where the flagpole is at. Why, if our staff is cleaning the weeds out of there, shouldn't that still be under this contract that they are supposed to maintain it?
Yes, it is under their purview to do that, but in order for us to keep a maintained area and making it look nice, the city staff has continued to maintain that once the fences come down.
So, no, I'm talking about the, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Don't worry.
I'm talking about the one across the street with the flagpole that's already done, that they planted trees, that always looks like weeds are growing in it. This is part of this.
That's the, that's the one he said he's cutting. He's, right.
Okay, so my, I'm sorry.
No, 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 don't worry.
My question is, if it's part of the contract, why are we doing it?
Mr. Murmas is very anxious right now.
Well, the, the corner that you're referencing is not completed at all. There's a ton of landscaping still to go in there and you're right, there are weeds in there because they haven't completed it yet. To maintain a higher standard, we've been going in there and cutting it on a more regular basis so we don't get any complaints about it getting too high before it's cut. So we've been going above and beyond to make sure it's trimmed. There has been a couple complaints on that that we followed up on.
Go ahead, you have a follow-up, Alderman Wesley?
Yeah, I totally understand that. You know, I totally understand that we want to make it nice every time, but far I'm concerned, that should not fall under our staff responsibility. It is still this person's contract and they need to maintain it and mow it. It's not. We need to put force on them that they have to go out there and knock down those weeds when there are complaints. It's part of this contract, guys, and they should maintain it. They didn't fill the contract. So I'm, that's my opinion.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you are next. Go ahead.
I agree. I mean, if it gets out of hand, we should find them just like we do anyone else.
Right.
I mean, there's no, there's no excuse for this. If there's weeds and stuff, they should be pulling them. If the grass needs to be cut until their contract's done, it needs to be maintained by them, not by us, not the taxpayers.
I agree.
Okay. I will make mention of it to them tomorrow.
Go ahead, follow-up. Go ahead.
So what we done already, how many times we've been out there, we should give it, we should bill it back to them.
Okay. Mr. Barnes, do you want to say something or?
Well, with respect to billing back, we certainly reach out and let them know that the, that the maintenance that's expected and the standard that the city is expecting, I think as the manager indicated, they, their intention is to maintain it on a particular schedule. When we get weather that we've had and some of the other things, that's not consistent with the aesthetics that the city wants. So I think Mr. York indicated he's going to reach out and let them know that their maintenance has to be more frequent, but in terms of having undertaken it, we can't go back and bill them back for that, but we certainly can moving forward, make sure that they're, they're adhering to the standard and will work out something if there are complaints that we can have a timely fix by Copenhagen.
You have follow-up? Go ahead.
So how many times were, did our city employees go out there?
Mr. York.
I did have that number with me now.
Could you get that number for me?
I can effort that.
Alderman Messina, you are next. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, and I had brought this up a while back and staff was good about addressing it. I had a resident sit at the shell with me and say like, "What the heck?" So my, my recommendation, instead of playing the game of city staff going or not, they just said, "Put up a fence. We're so close to completion. We just put one of the safety fences, like the orange fence." To me, then at least if I'm on the train, I'm not thinking that's a finished product and I'm okay with just being a fence and let it be. My concern that I brought to you guys was when there is no fence and I think it's done and I'm on the train, I'm like, "What a disaster." So that was just part one. Whether you guys want to go with just a gate and let it be, like a little safety fence, I'm okay with that personally and not battling the contractor at this point. The other part that I'm hoping for clarification is, are we going to, are we still going to fix, I think I asked you, mayor, are we going to fix the stacked stone that's on there? Because I noticed today there's still additional stone. I thought we were going to rearrange some of them? Or am I, is that mistaken?
Mr. York.
I guess I, I have no knowledge that there's a thought that the stone was not correct or not. If it wasn't put in per spec, then it will be rearranged or whatever as part of the punch list, but this is the first time that I've been hearing that the stone is not right or incorrectly stacked. There is, that stone that's, it's still there, is going to go across the street on the back portion of that property when the landscaping is completed on the northwest corner. So what we have at the northeast corner with, in respects to all the hardscape, to my understanding is that is all complete. What is not complete is some of the plantings because there's under, I'll say it wrong, but it's putting the bulbs in first and then putting the other plants on top of it. We have to put the bulbs in first and you can't put the bulbs in in the springtime, you have to put those in in the fall, so that's why that got delayed.
Okay. Could we?
Go ahead, follow-up.
Could we come to a consensus on whether Jeff needs to go back to the contractor at this point, or for, can we do some type of consensus on whether a fence is okay?
Mr. Bond.
Well, it certainly can be a discussion. The motion that's on the table has to do with, you know, concurring with the city attorney and staff recommendation as to the finishing this out, but we can, you can certainly give direction to the city manager to explore that as an option. It wouldn't necessarily need to be part of this motion.
Mr. York, go ahead.
One point of clarification on the analysis portion, the August ninth or August seventeenth roof extension where the liquidated damages were going to be up to nine days at eighteen thousand dollars. That roof actually was received in, by Copenhagen on Tuesday and installed on Wednesday and Thursday of this week, so that is a moot point now due to that portion of the project being completed. The roof portion, the roof portion of the project.
It came in, but it's still not, not up on top of the tower.
That is a different, a totally different part. They were talking the roof itself, the metal roofing, because that was supposed to be the seventeenth. Everything else is supposed to be done by the eighth of August. Post the eighth of August, we can start doing liquidated damages, if anything, except for now, the LED panels, the message boards are not completed.
Mr. Bond, could you just clarify that roof stuff? Well, he's saying, so they had the wrong roof and now it came in. Technically, the roof is on the, on the cap, but the cap's still not on top of the tower, so isn't that, I'm not.
They could have put the cap on top without the roof. That's what, they're saying that the delay, the roof was not supposed to be in until the fifteenth of September, or fifteenth of August, excuse me. They received it on the thirty-first of July, doing some arm twisting. They got it, installed it, it's installed now. So now, that portion of this is, is a non, non-point.
Go on. Alderman Wesley, go ahead, Eugene.
So, let me back up here. So when I tear apart a roof on my house, if I do, okay, I don't get approval until it's all completed. If, if I'm saying, if all he had to do is put the roof on that was sitting there and not the whole thing on, I just don't, far I'm concerned, a roof is completed is when the thing is on a tower, but to complete it on the ground, I mean, that, that don't make a lot of sense to me, Mayor.
Well, I'm kind of thinking same as you, but the attorney wants to make a statement, so go ahead, man.
So, everything in the project needs to be completed now with this scenario by, by August eighth, except for the message boards and the panels and then the extra landscaping that needs to be done in the fall, okay? The roof was separate because they ordered the wrong piece of material. Now that that is installed, yes, the top has to go up on, the cap has to go up on the top of the tower by August eighth. If it's not up by August eighth, then liquidated damages start, so. But before, they were going to try to put the roof or put the cap up there and then install the roof from an elevated structure.
Okay. Alderman Roy Wesley, you have your hand up.
Reading, when I'm going through this, staff, staff did these changes on these dates. Who, who from staff did this? Is it the city attorney? And who else?
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, I was working with staff on those, those, there was a request, this request was not acceptable to staff, and we did an analysis of some of the discussions that were held with respect to those, those panels, and this was the, the recommended solution that we came up with.
But this.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
This whole contract was supposed to be completed July thirty-first, correct?
Mr. Bond. With the exception of the landscape.
Correct.
Except for the landscaping.
Correct. Go ahead.
So, I don't know if people, you know, we've been going through by that clock tower for a while, and there's been days, three, four, five days that people weren't working there. I don't care if about pouring the concrete or not because they didn't, because it was raining those days or whatever. I understand we want a good product, but, you know, they haven't, they didn't work for five days and then staff is saying, sitting here saying that we're going to give you an extension on these things when you have five days of nothing being done there? That's, that doesn't make sense.
You're right, that doesn't make any sense at all. One hundred percent agree with you, because that's not what we're saying. We're saying for the work, we would charge liquidated damages, as Matt said, but there was some discrepancies in the LED panel and the electric board, which is what Pat was working on, so we one hundred percent agree with you.
But in your, in your.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley. Mr. Bond has an explanation on, on these LED panels as well.
It says, concrete of the floor, delay for three days due to rain.
They're entitled to a weather delay contractually.
How many days are they entitled then, for weather?
Mr. Bond, go ahead.
But the, the weather delay depends on, on the weather. This was the wettest May in history, and in June was one of the wettest. I don't know where it ranks on the, the all-time. So they, they would be entitled to that contractually. You can't have a contract where you don't take that into consideration. If that were the case, we'd have no one want to do work for the city. With respect to the LED panel message board, the panel was specced. There is a specific designer who is responsible for that. There were certain features that were, that this, the city wanted, the council was, was interested, and without getting into all the technical details, we did meet telephonically with the, with the contractor and with the designer, manufacturer of that, of that LED panel. You know, the only thing I'd use, and I've talked to a couple, one of the Aldermen at least, is you specced a, let's say, a minivan, and then that minivan has other features that you want. You're not changing, it's not changing from a minivan to an SUV, but you have certain features that you want in there that the designer is going to include in that, in that. And there was a question from the designer's standpoint, based on the specs, he knew he was building a minivan, but there were other provisions or other components that wanted to be in there. He needed direction from that. We had a discussion on that, and that did delay the actual commencement of the manufacturing of that panel in order to accommodate what specifically the needs and desires of the council with respect to, and the staff with respect to what that message board is going to look like. So that was part of the delay that was occasioned by the LED panel message board extension, and that's the reason that we are recommending that, granting that delay for that timeframe.
Alderman Woods, you were next. You're good? Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, they have a resolution adopting the DuPage County National Hazard Mitigation Plan, is my motion.
Second.
I think Randy beat me by a man or so.
So who is it?
Randy.
Randy.
We have a motion and a second. Questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, they have an ordinance declaring a property owned by the city of Wooddale surplus for the purpose of selling, is my motion.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Questions on this, Alderman Messina?
I have one question.
No, send. Go ahead.
I'm not sure if it's a Matt question, but looking at some of the items, there was a nineteen ninety-three Chevrolet G thirty.
Cheers.
Yeah. And I kind of reading through that, I guess maybe just understanding the process, are we truly selling it for one dollar? Because if so, I'd like to put my bid in.
Mr. York.
Yeah, so we start, we start, it's an auction. So it's minimum bid of one dollar. To be honest with you, I, I wouldn't drive it. So a lot of things we put, because if you put a minimum bid of like a thousand dollars or something on it, then, and it doesn't get a minimum bid, then we're coming back to you asking for you to change it. So we, we, a lot of the things that are nominal in price that we know we're not going to get very much for, we start with a low bid, we put it in as a dollar, and then, you know, the buyers go out and figure out how much it's going to cost. So if you would like to bid on it, publicauction.com will be your publicsurplus.com and we'll let you know when it goes up.
Alderman Messina.
Yeah, they're, just, just for the public and my own knowledge, like, is there restrictions on who truly can, who truly can bid? And what I mean by that, and I'm just saying generically, if, if, let's say I'm a mechanic and I say this car, this just is horrible, I think it had a rating of twenty or something, and I want it, and I'm the mechanic, in a vague, nonspecific scenario, could I indeed go on there as the mechanic for the city or municipality and bid on that and take that, even though I know it's worth a hell of a lot more than, mind my French, heck of a lot more than it is stated?
Mr. York.
Yes. Public Auction or publicsurplus.com allows every member of the world to bid on said products, so I understand your, your questioning, but we are also not giving out false information in order for something to go up on public surplus so that somebody from in-house can purchase it. So we allow anybody that writes the opportunity to bid on items. I've bid on items in the past that the city has sold and I've not been a winner of them, so.
Okay.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you were next.
That's exactly why the city would, went to auction on these items, because auction is run by someone else, it's not run by the city. There's a fee that we pay for them to run that auction, so. That's for some clarification.
And Alderman Eugene Wesley, you are next.
So I have one question. On this vehicle, I did read it with all the work that needs, is there a form that these people sign off? Because I don't want them pull out of here and find out that the brakes fail or something like that.
You mean tow out of here.
Are we leased out? Far I'm concerned, my concern is, I would sooner give this to, pay the dollars, give it to Bobby Carlo, he got it and keep it in his front yard for a term. I mean, to me, it's unsafe.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a bill of sale that's included with it, so they, we have no liability once they purchase from us.
Mr. Bond, were you going to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's, it's sold in as-is condition and the bill of sale transfers the title of the property and the city has no ownership interest and no residual liability for anything that we sell. We're saying you, you have an obligation to inspect it, and if you take it, it's yours and you take it with any and all warts and bruises and everything that's got on.
Alderman Jacob, you are next.
My question is, the first sentence says this truck is a former U.S. Air Force vehicle that was either purchased or acquired by the PD sometime in late two thousand and six. Do we not know if we paid money for this? I don't understand how we would.
Chief Festa? I, I do know that answer. We got that through the military lessor program. We only paid if a dollar, but we paid for the gas to bring it back here, so we've been using it for all those years, it was a free vehicle.
Follow-up?
No, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you were next.
I take it that anything that we sell on auction that we put in the ad is as-is?
Right.
Okay, because the attorney didn't say as-is, so I want to make sure.
It is as-is, it's advertised as as-is and.
Give us the Latin, too, Pat.
No, we don't want the Latin. The Latin, we've been through. All right, all right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Roll call, please.
Okay, here we go. Actually, I'm frozen, but I'll, I'll. Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, Mayor, I have an ordinance declaring property owned by the city, sorry, that one's done, just did it. A resolution seeking the approval of a permanent easement between the city of Wooddale and three twenty-eight Addison Road for the Squaw Creek project, that is my motion.
Second.
Your motion is second, Art was second. Any questions on this? Roll call. Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes.
Next, they have a resolution seeking approval of temporary construction easement to provide access to three twenty-eight Addison Road for the Squaw Creek project, that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes.
Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Messina?
I have one report, Mayor. Resolution authorizing the city of Wooddale to enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of property commonly known as three sixty-four through three seventy-six East Irving Park Road, Wooddale, Illinois. PIN numbers three fifteen two oh six zero one five and zero three fifteen two oh six zero one six. That is my motion.
Bingo.
That's what I said.
Randy motion, Mike second. Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley, go ahead.
First question is, the purchase of his properties for eight hundred and two thousand dollars, correct?
Mr. Bond?
That's correct.
Okay, second question is, we are going to take a loan on this from I task a bank?
Nope. Nope. Hold on a second. I'm sorry, I was asking, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Well, you answered the first one.
The second one I was talking about.
Are we taking a loan from I task a bank on this? And I know we have a line of credit with them for two million dollars, correct?
Mr. Murmurs.
That's correct.
Okay, so how much is left in that line of credit?
Mr. Murmurs.
Three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Follow-up?
After, after this purchase?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Murmurs. Follow-up question?
At what interest rate again?
I knew you were going to ask that question.
So you should have it.
I do not. I knew you were going to ask the three hundred and sixty-eight balance question. I did not get the percentage question, though. I don't remember.
Mr. Wesley.
But I know we've answered that a couple times.
That's okay. Every time we buy a piece of property, the public should know what the interest rate is, too.
I'm going to get a tattoo, tattoo it on so I remember.
We'll, we'll get you the answer. I know Mr. Wilson's out. Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Wesley, before we call anybody else?
No.
Okay. Alderman Sorrentino, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. All this concern of loans and monies and some of what I've heard out there, how much money do we have in the bank, Mr. Murmurs?
We have our, well, in excess of our fund balance policy, our fund balance policy is six months reserves. We have around nine.
That's nine million?
Go ahead, Alderman Sorrentino.
Nine million?
No, nine months reserves of our total budget, so.
That's approximately somewhere, give or take a little bit, nine million dollars.
I won't take full credit as the finance chairman, but yes, we are quite healthy and we.
Alderman Messina?
We are quite healthy and we've been noted as one of the most fiscally conservative in DuPage County.
Okay, with the commercials.
Which, I take pride in.
Alderman Sorrentino, do you have a follow-up question?
I apologize for not directing it to the chair, but that's a great answer. So we're not broke. Go ahead.
All right, any other questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Nope.
Pardon me?
Nope.
Of course, I know they're meeting.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Stormwater, Alderman E. Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Approval, list of bills, Alderman Messina?
Yeah, one report, Mayor. List of bills dated August 2nd, 2018, in the amount of $611,454.32.
Follow?
Second.
So, Mike made the motion, and Art's second. Any questions? Questions? Alderman E. Wesley, go ahead.
Mayor, I have like three.
Yeah, go ahead, no problem.
11.1 page, I mean, page seven. Dave and Jim for the Pace Bus Van Repair for $5,782. And then on page five, it's also got a bill for Dave, Jim Autobody Pace Bu...Van Repair for $5,000. So what, do we have two repairs on that van?
Mr. Murmuss.